Call the meeting order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Gleene?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
We have a forum.
Ladies and gentlemen, everybody, please rise for a moment of silence and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This is the first call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. You have any slips, Lisa?
I do not, sir.
This time, an open call to the public. Does any member of the public have anything they'd like to say? Seeing no movement, I'll call closed, call to the public.
Item six, consent. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a member of the council, unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, proclamation of the mayor declaring August 2015 as drowning impact awareness month. Item B, approval of the GIS enterprise license agreement renewal award, the bid to Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., in amount not to exceed $27,175,000. Item C, appointment of interim town manager Lisa Garcia to serve as one of the citizen members of the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Police and Fire Boards with a term expiring February 2017. Item D, ratification of the emergency spill remediation work completed by Balfour Property Restoration in amount not to exceed $31,476.97. Item E, acceptance of the registers of demands ending June 30, 2015, amount of $7,403,896.76. Mayors and members of council, that is your consent agenda for this evening's meeting.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to have item D.
E?
D.
D?
David.
Okay. Item D, any other? D is in David. Does any member of the public have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Seeing no movement, I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written, removing item D.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item D. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. John?
I have a question on the item D. It says that this was the two pumps had been turned on to waste the digester and a failure to monitor the level caused the overflow. I guess I'd like to have an explanation on the failure to monitor. Was that a personnel problem or equipment problem?
Mayor Rankin, Vice Mayor Walter, councilperson Anderson, yes, it was due to operator area. The operator was giving some counseling and retraining on the matter, and subsequently, what we did is, in order to avoid the situation again, is to install a couple of float levels to determine the flow of the water in the digesters so that would automatically turn off when it reached a certain level. And that was done in both digesters. This was a second occurrence at the Nort plant within a year, but this time, we took the appropriate action in resolving the issue for good.
Good, thank you. Then I'll make a motion to approve item D.
I'll second.
We have any other discussions? We have a motion and a second to approve consent item D. Hearing, seeing no movement, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item seven, new business. 7A, discussion approval disapproval of authorizing the town manager to negotiate and enter into a farm lease with Morningstar Farms for 94.6 acres in an area known as the Giles property. Mr. Knutson will provide you with an update.
Mayors, excuse me, mayor, members of the town council, good evening. Before you, for your consideration, this evening is a farm lease for the Bacon property located directly west of the new aquatic center and the library facility, directly west of Town Hall. This was a put out for bid, and on Wednesday, July 29, at noon, we received one bid from Morningstar Farms. The town has entered into multiple agreements in the past with the same farming operation. Dennis Bagnell is the local farmer in the area, and it's his desire to utilize the water allotment that we received from Skid on that property for farming operations not located on the subject property. So he's got other farms in the area, and he wants to utilize that water allotment that's designated for that property at his other farming operations. So we receive a water allotment from Skid, and what we're asking for Morningstar Farms is to reimburse the town for that cost of that water allotment, and in return, Morningstar Farms would assist us with the maintenance of that property. So he would keep the fields free of debris and weeds and assist us with those responsibilities and those expenses. Before you, within your agenda packet, you have the materials, including the contract that was placed out as part of the bid process, and the notes that were identified by Dennis Bagnell at Morningstar Farms when he submitted his bid. We're asking for the town council to authorize the town manager to negotiate this contract. However, 99.9% of the contract's already been identified. There'll be some changes with regards to dates and things like that that won't significantly impact the agreement. With that, I can answer any questions or concerns.
Any members of the council have any questions? Jess?
I have a question. What about the watering of the property that is going to, the town is still going to use, like the new soccer fields? Is that watered from Skid?
Councilmember, mayors of the, members of the council, we'll be utilizing potable water for the soccer fields of that area. However, there is a project that's underway to connect this area to the wastewater treatment plant, and hopefully, we'll be using effluent water for the fields and for the landscape areas in the future.
Thank you.
And this is a one-year contract, right?
The contract you have before you is good for one, it's a, let me take that back. It's a perpetual agreement, so the contract itself does not identify a termination date. However, the town, with 60 days' notice, can terminate the contract at any time, and he has the ability to do that as well.
Okay, I want a clarification, thank you.
Any other question? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Make a motion to authorize the town manager to negotiate and enter into a farm lease with Morningstar Farms for 94.6 acres in the area known as the Giles property.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the town manager to negotiate and enter into a farm lease with Morningstar for 94.6 acres on the area known as Giles property. Any other discussion? Only thing I'd say in the motion is that I think negotiating's already been done, so in the motion, I don't know if that should be in the motion or not. I think it just authorized entering a contract.
It's merely, it's merely dates, mayor.
What?
It's merely dates, changing of dates.
I can't hear you, Lisa.
It is merely changing of dates within the contract.
Okay. Okay.
And mayor, members of the council, just a point of clarification, the term of the lease is through December of 2016, just to clarify.
Thank you.
And, you know, could be renewed, sorry.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item B, discussion approval disapproval of receiving and filing the 2014 annual police report. Chief?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we bring to you an annual report. This was actually done some time ago, but I actually wanted to get it before you so that you could see what's went over through the last year, and it won't take a lot of your time, but I just wanted to point out a few things about this. We reduced crime 9% from 2013, so each year, we've managed to continue to bring crime down. Not that we had a lot of crime, because I don't want you to think we had a lot, but it's always good to have a reduction in crime. Just so you know, we've tried to stay pretty consistent in the number of officers we've had. We had some vacancies in '13, we got it up to the authorized strength of 31. We still have some dispatch positions, but that's typical, there's a lot of movement in that area. You can see the Part I crimes from 2011 through 2014. In 2012, they were at 320. Every year, we've brought that down to now it's 253 Part I crimes, which is really a relatively low crime rate for the Part I's. You can see the number of calls that we handle. You know, Florence does handle a lot of, a lot of calls for service. We actually had 29,000 calls for service that came into dispatch. Not that we dispatched officers each and every one, but those were calls that came into our dispatch center. So we are a little busier than what you might think. I threw this in there, this was from a website that shows that Florence is the top, in the top ranking for the places to be, and talks about our safety. We're real proud of that, and hopefully, you are as well. I'd be remiss if I didn't say something. It's not just me up here. This really goes out to the men and women of the Florence Police Department that do a great job day in and day out, making sure that we're safe and secure, so wanted to let you know and make sure I mentioned them. This is to tell you a little bit about how we break down the schedules. I like to do a third, a third, and a third. We like to break their, they work a 10-hour shift, and their day should actually be spent, a third of their day should be proactive. A third of their day is going to be writing reports. You're always going to have to write reports, and a third of their time should be out actually handling calls for service, and we're right close to that in that area. When I say administratively, that breaks down to officer spend and briefing, training, writing the reports, taking their dinner break, that's administratively, and the other is proactive. I like to, a third of their shift should be out in the neighborhoods, going up and down, looking for things to do, looking and doing crime prevention. So we break that down, and we're pretty good in that area. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about our volunteers. In addition to the men and women of the police department, we have a great number of volunteers, and last year, we lost Wally in the center there. Wally was really a staple that was here day in and day out. If you didn't know any better, you'd think he was a full-time employee. So we have a great group at the Florence Police Department and a great group of volunteers, and it wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing the job we're doing if it wasn't for your support. So with that, I'll thank you and answer any questions you might have.
Do you remember the council have any question? Dan?
No.
Dan, take it back to your department, we're proud of them, and keep up the good No raises, no new cars this year, we know that, but we're going to give the 3% merit, or not a merit, but a stipend. So, but tell them we really appreciate the work they're doing for us and to keep up the good work.
Thank you, and I will.
Departmental reports, do any member have any questions, any of the department heads or president or the manager?
Mayor, if I may, underneath the manager's report, Judge Valdez is here to introduce himself from council. We are excited to have him with us and present tonight. Do you want to come up, Judge? But we entered into a contract with the city of Eloy on July 27, and Mr. Valdez has been working with us so graciously since July 1. We're very pleased to have him with us this evening.
Mayor, council, I would just like to introduce myself, Roger Valdez, lifelong resident in Pinal County, born and raised in Costa Grande. I look forward to serving the citizens of Florence, and if you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer them.
And you're in on Fridays, right?
Mondays and Fridays.
Mondays and Fridays, if anybody?
Friday morning, I'm usually here by about 9:00.
So if you need a ticket checked, Bill. If you need a check, ticket checked out, Mondays and Fridays.
Again, if there's anything that the court can do, or the council, mayor, if you have any questions, I like to have an open-door policy. Please feel free to contact me. I'd love to set up a meeting and sit down and discuss any issues that might arise.
Well, we appreciate it, Roger, and I know you do a good job. I've known you quite a while, a few years anyway.
Thank you, sir.
And I know you do a good job, just like you've done wherever else you've been. I really, really think that Eloy and Florence bonding like this are showing communication and cooperation amongst communities, and I'd like to see that.
Well, I love to see it, and when I was approached with the idea of doing work for the town of Florence, I said, the thing that we needed to do was work out an intergovernmental agreement between the two cities, and that's what happened, and I'm really glad that it worked out that way.
Well, thank you very much. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I'll just say thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Point of order on the police report. We were supposed to have a motion to review that report.
To receive and file?
We just receive and file it, no motion is necessary.
What's that?
We can just receive and file the report, it's this annual report, so the agenda is worded improperly, my apologies.
Okay. Didn't want to miss out on the opportunity to make a motion.
Do you remember the council have any questions, any of the department heads now?
I've got a general comment, because I try to read all these, and the department managers, you know, they're involved in all this stuff on a daily basis, and they use a lot of abbreviations.
Who's that?
If you read the reports, there's a lot of abbreviations, like, and acronyms, and since this goes out to the public, I would just suggest that if you're going to use an abbreviation or an acronym, that you at least define it one time in the report.
I guess, where you, which, can you give me an example, John?
Sure. On the courts, for example. VCS collections, FAR TIPs.
Okay.
Then on their graph, they have the TOFs, ampersand sign. I'm assuming that's town of Florence, something or another.
Okay. Why don't we take a look at that and see how we can streamline it to make it more recognizable by the public?
Most definitely.
Karen?
I have a question for Ernie Feliz.
Mr. Feliz is not attending the meeting this evening.
Okay. With the grants, there's two things. One, I would like to, you know, challenge our department heads to come together and brainstorm and even seek out grant opportunities. I know Ernie is an expert in that field, and I actually am as well, so I'd also like to offer my services if anybody needs any assistance with grant writing. I know one of the grants that we talked about before as a council, the SAFER grant, I don't see that on there. Do you know if we're going to be continuing?
I can tell you that there is three rules for continuing, this is continuing the SAFER grant. Under rule number one, you have to, well, let's start with rule number three. Rule number three is that you need to bring your department level up to the necessary practices, and that is what we rewarded the SAFER grant under, is bringing our positions up. Rule number two, or reason number two for getting the grant would be that you are in fear of laying off, or you have made a layoff plan to lay off personnel within the fire department, so you would be saving their jobs. And the third reason would be, is if you did not expend all of your grant dollars in the two-year fiscal requirement for that grant, so you would be getting an extension of not really the monetary value, but of the years that you would be utilizing the grants. So underneath the first system, we're going to utilize all of our funding within the two years, we would not qualify. And underneath the third one, we are at staff. So it would just be depending on if we were going to go with the third round and say that we are laying off people and that they are in a fear of losing their jobs so that we need to keep their jobs. And we have not stated that we're there. Florence is trying to make every effort possible to go in and to make sure that all of our positions are sound in the town of Florence. But as that approaches, we do plan on having continuation of grant meetings and discussing the SAFER grant to see if there's any other opportunities, or if there may be a rule or something that we have missed when we are considering this.
Okay. And there's also a lot of grants that I found, you know, through the Phoenix Coyotes, the Phoenix Suns, that directly relate to Parks and Rec. I talked to Brian briefly about them. We can touch base again. And I did have a question on the Hilo River Indian Community Dispatch Council. So it says 66,014 to create an additional dispatch council for responding to emergency calls. Now, will we have an additional dispatcher at that council as well?
Chief, do you want to take that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have the actual console sitting there. This will buy all the equipment that'll go with it and put in all the lines. Our goal is to have that available for not only training, but there are opportunities or times when we need the third dispatcher. If there's a huge fire or something, we can bring a dispatcher in, and depending upon the calls for service, it may be covered part of the time, and that also gives us the room to grow, that should the calls for service increase, we'll be ahead of the curve. So it is something that was needed, and I think it's going to be a really good use of the grant funds.
Okay, thank you. And then I had one more question, both for the police and fire chief. Have you guys come together to have like a grand-scale incident slash scenario that could happen in the town of Florence, just to have the, bring the two departments together and work that way?
We actually, we currently have not done that since Dave's been here, but we did do that with, actually, we did, just did a tabletop that involved Falls Police Fire and also all of the prisons, ICE. We meet monthly as a group, the Florence group, and we did a tabletop, and this particular tabletop was a transport that turned over on the bridge, which could actually happen, which caused a cloud that would, then, how would we move out all the prisoners, and what would it do to downtown Florence? So we do look at those kind of things, and we do run those exercises. At some point, we'll actually do another one where we actually physically call people in. That will occur at some time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, members of the council, any question?
I'm not sure who I direct this to, but on the new Main Street extension, I'm getting a lot of feedback from the community on the speed limit, you know, they're going, it's so flat out there, and you can see all around, there's no children, they're wondering why it's 25 instead of at least 35. But it's not a major thing, but I've just been running into people that have asked me about that, and I said, I don't know, maybe ADOT had something to do with it, because we connect into the Highway 79, but I was just curious who made that decision, or why we picked that speed limit.
Wayne?
Mayor Rankin, Vice Mayor Walter, councilperson Hawkins. Basically, our speed limit is determined by a functional classification of the road that we have out there. Our standard road is 28 feet wide, that's the width of that road. Henceforth, it's still considered a residential per se road, and for that, our design criteria of up to a maximum of 2,000 vehicles per day only allocates 25 miles per hour. Engineering-wise, when they designed that, they designed 10 miles per hour greater just for a safety cushion. We still intending, as I think I mentioned earlier, to put up some traffic control devices. We're concerned about the 600-foot radius curve in that, and also the Z-curve before you enter 79, and of course, the accesses here off Town Hall and Territory Square when it's built. So matter of fact, though, we didn't have a speed report when we transmitted the traffic count, but we'll put a speed demarcation within our computer in order to ascertain that in the upcoming two to three weeks, so we can determine what the actual speed is, because in actuality, the road speed should be contingent on the 85 percentile of the road speed that's used on a roadway, so we can determine that, and it could be that we could raise that speed. Right now, as we noted in our memo, the speed of that road, I mean, the count on that road is about 325 on a normal weekday, and that's considered basically a low-volume road.
I just have one quick question, whether or not we might get an update on the construction progress for the library?
Put that on next week's agenda.
For the 17th? We'd be happy to.
Yeah, and then Brian, if you can get ahold of Councilman Walter, or Wall, and clue in, is what's going on. And Bill, I agree with you on the speed limit and like that, because it's, I didn't know my car, my truck could go 25 miles an hour, and it can't.
No, I mean, it's not a big deal. I was just, I've had people, you know, ask me, and I was just trying to get an answer because I wasn't sure.
Okay.
I'm fine with it, but, you know.
Any other comments on department reports? Second call to the public with the same admissions that we had before. Does anybody in the public have anything they'd like to say? Seeing none, I'll close, call to the public, call to the council, Bill.
No, I have, I have nothing to say to you, thank you.
Karen?
I'm fine, thanks.
Valerie?
I don't have anything tonight.
John?
I'd like to thank the department heads for their reports. I really enjoy going through that and finding out what's going on. Thank you.
Becky?
Oh, I don't have anything.
Karen?
I just want to highlight one of the items on the consent agenda tonight was drowning impact awareness month, and I just wanted to say drowning is a top cause of injury related death for children in Arizona, especially in the one-to-five-year-old age group. If you don't have a fence around your pool or have it locked up in any way, I encourage everybody to do so, as well as keep your eye on your children. Thank you.
Only thing I have to say is, you know, we got a, we did a proclamation tonight about child drowning. Please, people, watch your children around water. That saying two seconds too long is too true. We don't need any of that. We do have a fire department that'll help you, but the best help for those children around pools is you, the parent, or you as an adult around. With that, we're not going to have an executive session, so, I mean, it Need a motion?
We'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adjourn. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.